Anyone here for public comment? Going, going, gone. Seeing none, let's move on to the agenda. The approval of the meeting minutes for November 7th, 2021.
Twenty-two.
Oh, twenty-two.
My bad.
Twenty-two.
It's like though.
I have not finished reading, so if you can circle back to what it's going to.
I'll circle back, fine, okay. I have the select board reports. Anything?
Not at this time.
Okay, I have nothing at this time. Town administrator?
I do not have much today. I have only been back in the office for about three days, so it's just been a whirlwind trying to catch up over the past couple of weeks of work that I've been gone for. The only thing that I wanted to make you aware of was that on Wednesday, as is traditional, the day before Thanksgiving, we closed the offices at noon, so we will be following with that tradition on Wednesday, and the town hall will be closed at noon and the staff will have a half-day.
Correspondence, anything?
Nope.
Hearing none, good thing. Okay, are you ready for new business?
Sure. I'm listening, scanning.
We can go into the public hearing then. Public hearing for tax classification hearing. Will you open the hearing?
Sure.
Motion?
Motion to open the tax classification hearing.
There's been motions been made, so I'll second it, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you.
Want to just introduce yourself for the camera?
Sure. Have a seat.
The cameras are actually all around and they'll focus on you.
They'll pick you up.
But the microphones are on the table, so.
Oh, okay, good. I'm Jesse Warren, I'm the new administrative assessor for the town of Barry, started in March, and so I'd like to talk about the tax classification options that we have to go over every year with the select board. There's four things that we have to talk about. Number one would be talking about adopting the minimum residential factor. Basically what this is, is it's a number that determines the ratio of the tax burden for the overall likely between residential sector of town and our commercial and industrial sector.
Okay.
And I have some handouts for you here with some numbers, so you can see where our percentages lie towards values.
Thank you.
Oh, you got it, good. Yeah, and so you can see that based on our recently certified values by Department of Revenue, the residential sector makes up almost ninety percent of our tax burden, and everything else is less than five percent. So historically, we've adopted a minimum residential factor of one, which means that all property regardless of classification is taxed at the same rate. And this is what the board assessors recommends we continue to do, because otherwise there is the option to shift some of the tax burden from the residential end of things onto the commercial industrial sector, but because we have so little commercial industrial presence, we recommend just keeping it uniform.
Okay.
So, and if at any point you have any questions, please feel free to stop now.
In other words, if we want to shift ten percent more of the tax base to commercial, we double over their taxes.
Well, we're not going to do that, right?
I'm just saying, so people understand, to shift a ten percent tax break for the homeowners would be a hundred percent tax increase for all the businesses in town, and this is why we don't move it.
You see all, their recommendations and rationale are on page two of this document. This has been practiced for, since I think God was a child, so I think.
It's been, it's.
Been a long time.
Yeah, so that is the board's recommendation for our residential factors. We've been meeting at once, that's a uniform tax rate for everybody. Then there are three potential exemptions that could be adopted by the town. The first of these is called an open space discount. These are all generalized options mandated, or not mandated, proposed by the state for town adoption. This one specifically would give a tax benefit of up to twenty-five percent of the value to any properties that would be classified as open space in the town of Barry. However, due to the existence of the Chapter 61 land tax program, we don't actually have any open space in Barry, it's all Chapter one.
Right.
So adopting this wouldn't make any sense, it wouldn't apply to any parcels, so the board recommends that we do not adopt the open space discount. The next option would be a residential exemption. This is a, this is an exemption that grants up to a twenty percent discount in value to owner occupied residential properties. This would exclude properties that were vacant land, seasonal homes, and residential properties not occupied as a primary residence by the owner. So this is a way in communities such as Boston and Springfield where they have a large body of non-owner occupied homes and apartment buildings, that sort of thing, they can shift the burden from the residential body onto that portion. However, Barry does not have a significant portion of non-owner occupied homes, so the Board of Assessors recommends that we do not adopt a residential exemption. And the last one is the small commercial exemption. This exemption is for up to ten percent of the value for commercial parcels occupied by businesses with an average annual employment of not more than ten people during the previous calendar year, and with an assessed value of less than one million dollars. It's important to note that the owner of the property, not the business occupying the site, receives the tax benefit. The Board of Assessors has advised against adopting a small commercial exemption for that reason, the fact that the business, that the owner of the property, not the business owner, gets the tax benefit. And this would also shift the tax burden from commercial properties onto industrial properties, which as I said, we have very little of.
So basically, we see in writing all of the information that you just discussed with us, and obviously, we need to make the decision on these matters tonight, so I would seek a motion?
All right. I would make a motion that we apply a factor of one to the, do we say just residential, say residential, commercial to all tax rates?
Applying the minimum residential factor of one would be a uniform tax rate.
For all tax rates. That's the first motion.
That's the first motion, that, I would second that motion. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ananous.
I would make a motion that we vote no on all three special exemptions, which are the open space, the residential exemption, and the small commercial exemption.
As recommended by the assessors.
As recommended by the assessors.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all we need, correct? We don't need to do, we just need the factor and the exemptions?
Right.
Correct, and just to, if I can submit this to Department of Revenue, if you would be so kind as to sign on those two forms, anymore on that form?
Do you need John Dixon's signature as well?
I think we're okay as long as I have a majority.
Yeah, you should be okay with two.
That's on this board.
Thank you.
So do you want me to check these off, that we voted no?
Yes, those, I put those boxes there for whatever the board's decision was.
Jesse, thank you so much for being here, and I've heard wonderful things about the work that you're doing, and sort of jumping in feet first, and you've learned a lot very quickly.
Thank you, I'm doing my best.
You are, indeed, you're doing a lot for us, thank you.
All right.
Do you need anything else from us, is this another thing you need from us?
Sign that, probably, they just signed the second page.
Geez, Greg. You would never get through our.
It's my mark.
We'd never get through penmanship class there.
It's my mark. My mark. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jesse. I would accept a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing on tax rates.
And I would second that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Looks like we're looking for Dr. Muir with her QRSD update discussion. Thank you for being here, I'm sure that's one more thing on your calendar.
Thanks for allowing me to take a little bit of your time.
Uh-oh, looks like a lot of stuff here.
I have some information, but just for, again, for information purposes, this, I brought one from Dixon too, so.
We can get it to him.
Okay. Just in an effort to keep town officials informed of what's happening in the school district, I'm trying to attend select board meetings in all of our communities on a somewhat regular basis this year. What you have in your packet, again, this is just for your review and your leisure, the first three documents are school committee reports that basically provide an update of what's happening in the school district in each of our departments. These represent the reports that were given at the September, October, and November school committee meetings, and it, you know, again, it's a pretty good overview of the highlights of what we're working on as a school district. These are published online, I believe that this has been, is, we are getting an email to you as well, but I like to read from paper, so I thought it would bring a paper copy for, for you, if you, okay, if you, sorry, so it will give you, you know, I certainly won't go through it, there's a lot of information here, but it can give you an update of what we worked on over the summer as well, and things that we're working on as the school year unfolds, so I'll continue to have those sent to you, but also if you like the paper copy, I'll, in a couple months, I'll bring some more.
How's the new literacy curriculum going?
It's, it's going well. It's, it's a big adjustment for our teachers, yes, particularly high school, but all teachers, it's, it's a, it's just any new curriculum that you adopt requires a lot of changes, a lot of information, we're doing a lot of professional development, we have teachers around that literacy curriculum we do see so far, but results with it, so I'm looking forward to seeing positive results in our test scores, and my early literacy assessments, so I will certainly keep up the radar. So I won't, I won't spend a lot of time on that, but again, I just wanted to provide that to you for your, for your information. The next document in your packet is a report of the commission on the fiscal health of rural school districts, and I'm sharing this with all of our select boards in our five towns, because this report was commissioned by the governor and the legislature and the Department of Education as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act, you may remember, is a funding formula that provided relief to many urban districts and high need districts to support unfunded or underfunded schools. Many rural school districts do not receive any additional funding as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, primarily because many rural school districts have experienced declining enrollment. To appease the rural school districts, they asked us to study, you know, what are the challenges of running, of running a regional school district, what are the challenges for the communities that, that support those school districts in funding? So this report is lengthy, it's about a year's worth of work. I was appointed to the commission from the Regional School Superintendent's Association, and we heard, we took hours and hours and hours of testimony from town officials and municipal leaders and school district leaders across the state representing rural school districts. What this boils down to is, if you read this thoroughly, you will see that it does outline the challenges not only for providing an equitable educational opportunity for students who reside in rural communities, but also the challenges that communities face in supporting their schools, especially in the rural communities. Ultimately, there were thirty-six recommendations, which is, you'll see on the, it's a little bit of a list, it's a separate sheet of paper that I provided at the end, it's a thirty double stapled. There are thirty-six recommendations that came out of this report. Some organizations now, the regional school superintendents, the legislators that led this work, as well as the superintendent's association and others, are trying to pare down those recommendations and prioritize them so that can be filed as legislation and hopefully result in some additional financial support for rural schools and rural school districts. So the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is that we're hoping over time to get, once the legislation is filed, to have town leaders help support our efforts to get this legislation passed, and that would hopefully maybe, you know, involve the Mass Municipal Association and other town, other town municipal organizations. So I will be providing you with updates. I provide an update to the school committee every month in my report about where this work is going, but I did think that would be interesting for you to at least see that there is an official record of how challenging, and a recognition that rural school districts, it costs more to operate rural school districts than urban or suburban in some ways, and the challenges are unique, and there needs to be a recognition, we believe, of what those challenges are in more funding to support rural schools so that the burden to the communities is not so great. So that is all I will say on that. Stop me any time if you have any questions, but I don't want to, again, take too much of your time. The next item in your packet is just a copy of a letter that was sent to Senator Goby from our business manager, Cheryl Duval. The reason I'm sharing this letter with you is, just to make you aware of some of the challenges that we're anticipating for the upcoming budget cycle. We received notification from the Operational Services Division of the state that they've allocated fourteen, a fourteen percent increase for.
Out of district.
Out of district placement schools, fourteen percent intuition. We have absolutely no control over that. This affects every school district in the state of Massachusetts. For us, that represents a $228,000 increase, if our, again, that's qualifying that by saying, if all our out of district placement enrollments stay stable, which would mean a point six budget increase without one additional dollar spent on anything else. So we are, school districts are up in arms, as you can imagine, about this, and we are, you know, working with the legislature to see if there's any relief that can be provided for us related to this, but, you know, again, just one of those things that's completely out of our hands, and sets us sort of in the hole, right, to begin with the budget process.
Unfunded mandates, especially transportation, exactly that, especially, and that's, I don't know why, there was representative, and senators certainly understand the problem, and I don't know why they don't make any headway with this, it's burying the school system, the amount of costs that, expenses over fifty thousand to transport one student per year.
It can be, absolutely, absolutely.
It's outrageous, and, you know, the mandates from the state, where we have to send money for now, money spent.
The auditorium's doing a report, okay, I've completed a report about that and indicated to the state and all the legislators that from the auditorium's perspective, they have woefully underfunded the issues that you're talking about.
Woefully.
And it didn't make any difference at all?
Well, I don't know how they expect. Once again, my frustration with town, that we spend more than fifty percent of our budget on the school, we, we struggle with our stuff in town, and then we're not just having increases, we're going to have increases in electric and fuel and all sorts of other things, and money just doesn't appear. It's frustrating.
It certainly is frustrating, and, and as you, you have just that one line on out of district transportation.
That's a big item.
It is a big item, and it's more, it's greater in rural community because those schools aren't, well, they're not down the street. You know, they, we have further transport, and we work with other districts, if we have, you know, a neighboring district that has a student going to that school, we share the transportation cost.
If you can share.
If we can, exactly.
If they can share the ride.
Yes, that's true. So that is just a little bit of bad news. The, the other item in your packet is something that we're hoping to work on as the school year unfolds. We have, any of you that are familiar with our alumni field, we have, we do not have a press box, we, we built, when the field was built, we didn't even have a football team. Right now, you can see that top left-hand picture is what our press box is, we have people standing on scaffolding.
And we call it scaffolding.
Yes, and not, not probably the best, most safe way for people to.
Let the building inspect, see, and if it doesn't pass, it needs a regular license for that, it certainly looks, for the height, too narrow for what they would.
Well, we're hoping not to have to use it for, for, for very long. We, we have launched a fundraising campaign to try to help us fund a press box, and what this would entail would be to take two sections out of the center of the current benches that are on alumni field.
On either side.
And probably put them on the other side, and then add, there are currently six rows of seats now, we would add a section in the middle there that would be fifteen rows of seats with the press box on the top.
Sheila, can you give me an estimate of what you think this would cost?
We think this is going to be in the range of $300,000. So we're starting with fundraising, and we're, we're hoping to, we've already, we just started last week, and we have some donations, we've got about $6,000 in donations already, so that's, you know, a small amount compared to the overall cost, but the reason, again, we don't believe that we'll be able to raise $300,000, we will likely be coming to the communities to ask you to consider creating a, you know, an authorization on, on coming to town anymore at some point in the future. So just wanted to keep you up to date with that, and you can see on the right there, all of our, all of our neighboring school districts have press boxes, so it'll allow us to have better sight, sight view, or keep our athletes competitive, and we'll bring our athletic facility up to other areas of schools, so, and reduce the risk that we have people on the staff to do.
Sheila, could you, you know, going forward, not obviously this evening, but could you give us some indication, as you have these meetings, about any plant facilities, like roofs and windows or things like that that might be coming from the high school and/or from elementaries, because obviously that would be something that we have to consider as well.
Right.
And, and, and bonding, we're getting this thing. One thing, you guys do have a laundry, you can borrow money, so that is all of this stuff here, also you can get access to, you know, MSBA money.
Yes.
With grants and so forth, so.
Yes, not for something like this, for, for the roofs, absolutely.
Because I would suspect the Quavon roof is closer.
Yes.
Most of the other schools at this point.
Absolutely.
Because you just finished the big roofing in Hardeston.
Hardeston.
And Barry, we finished a roof there. Hardwick, that's a lot of plant, I don't, I know we had a problem with them, they didn't move there, kind of prematurely, but I worry about that high school roof, that would be something that obviously all the towns are sharing, but just to keep, keep us.
I will post it on that.
I'll thank you so much.
Additional information about that.
This is really helpful, thanks.
And finally, I did want to let you know that we're going to update the Quavon strategic plan, which expired June.
That was fun.
And we'll be launching a strategic planning group, so, and we'll also be sending out surveys to community leaders. The first meeting of the large planning committee will be on December 13th, I plan to send something out, we would love to have a town official from Quavon, it would only really involve two meetings, one sort of to kick off the, the planning, and then one to review the draft plan, so the first meeting will be on, I think it's December, December 14th, six to nine p.m., so if, if a Barry select board member or another town official in Barry would like to be part of that, we would welcome that. If not, we hope that you will take the surveys that we send out and give us some feedback so that we really, the plan that we develop is reflective of as many stakeholders input as, as possible, so.
Good.
Any questions, Gregor? Well, thank you so much for taking the time to be here, thank you for the documents, we appreciate it. We'll make sure that.
You can go all the way through. You're good, you can go all the way through, because it's skinning the headlines.
Well, I will make sure John Dixon will, he also gets it as well.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila. You're welcome to stay, Sheila, for the rest of the meeting.
It's very interesting.
I'll catch it online.
Sure, sure, okay. I see that you're back, is there something else you needed to see us with?
No.
You're just visiting? Okay, thank you. Just checking.
He finds us fascinating.
Yeah. Let's talk a little bit about, with the police department and the chief today, about body worn cameras funding, as well as, maybe.
While he's walking, can I make a motion to approve the agenda minutes from November 7th?
Yes, you can. You mean, yeah, yeah, you can.
You want to second it?
I was seconding it.
Oh, great.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All good. Okay, chief.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good, thanks.
Good. All right, so I think I briefed you guys briefly before on body cameras, and body cameras is something that I'm trying, that I'm implementing. I did apply for a grant through the state, I was lucky enough to be awarded said grant, so I was awarded a grant in the amount of $30,352.80.
Nice.
Now.
Doesn't go too far, does it?
Well, no, it doesn't. Unfortunately, the state will not cover the cost of data storage or warranties, so what that means to us is I need to fund $37,300.80, of which $30,352.80 will be reimbursed, leaving $6,948.
So all the town is on, hope for is just a $6,000?
Is that an annual amount?
So the $6,948 is annually.
Okay.
The $30,352.80 covers all the hardware, plus replacements.
What's the timeline for these to?
So, as, as always, I need to sign the quote, I need to accept Axon's quote, which is the body camera company, by December, by December 1st, or prices go up, and it throws everything off.
Well, I know that we've talked about this, and I, I know you, we have a union, and you don't anticipate any issues of concern there, as you've had discussions with your, your staff?
Correct, I've had discussions with the staff, and I also, as part of the grant, did have to affirm that, that we are in, or entering into contract negotiations with the union, and that the subject will be brought up.
Okay. So we wouldn't be moving forward with a $6,000 folly that, that, pretty soon they say, we're not going to wear these?
Well, I anticipate within the next year or two it's going to be mandated by the state anyways.
Okay.
So, and, no, I don't believe that the union will have any.
So what you need from us is a funding for the $6,000-plus dollars?
Well, I need $37,300.80.
Yeah, and then we get a reimbursement.
And then we get reimbursed the $30,000, so yes. And then I need commitment of $6,948 this year, and then just an advisory that I will be adding $6,948 to my operating budget for the next four years.
This is getting awfully close to a number like that truck we tried to pick up for $50,000, and we told, oh, no, no, that's going to a town vote, that kind of expenditure.
Well, I would, I would take this out of ARPA, as I think this is a very.
We can do it out of ARPA, and we can still propose it at special town.
Yeah.
And if the town's willing to fund it.
Yeah.
You know, whether we leave it out of ARPA or whatever.
I would agree with that, a hundred percent.
But give the town a chance to, at least.
Well.
If we fund that out of ARPA, we don't have to bring it to the meeting, but. If we fund that out of ARPA, we don't have to bring it to the meeting, but...
So I think we would have to fund it out of ARPA temporarily, because we're going to get the reimbursement.
Yes, yeah.
So I don't think it would be necessary.
We'd upfront some money, yeah.
Yeah.
And the decision would be, we come to town meeting and discussion with the finance committee, if it's wise to leave it out of ARPA, or if we think we can put it into the budget in some place.
Well, we probably could...
Because it's going to have to become a portion of the...
The $6,000 is going to have to become, I don't know how frequently these things have to be upgraded, or...
So this includes two complete equipment replacements over the period of five years.
Okay.
At the end of the five years, then we may have to revisit what...
But the portion of $6,900 does cover storage, it's an annual fee.
Right.
The $6,948 is storage and warranty, that's an annual fee.
It's an annual fee.
And so that would be potentially what we end up actually taking from ARPA, at least this year, with the rest being...
Right, after the reimbursement phase.
Yep.
And it's tricky, you can't say, we can't reimburse ARPA. We spend ARPA, we spend ARPA, we're going to have free cash. So there's a trade-off there. Really, it's, well, we can promise to fund it through ARPA, we can wind up funding it through a different source and not take, touch the ARPA funds, but if we initially pay for it out of ARPA, it's not like we can replace ARPA funds.
But we do...
Or why would we?
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Why replace restricted, semi-restricted funds? Not, not very restricted, but semi-restricted with unrestricted funds. So if we funded through ARPA, we may be better off just leaving it there, because, even if we funded it through town meeting, and we, why restrict that money back?
Well, it's only going to be, it's only going to be $6,000, well, $7,000.
Right.
And so I would certainly...
And when the grant money comes back in, it's going to go into the town coffreton, not into, you know, our ARPA account.
It'll go into the general fund.
So I think maybe we should just fund it out of ARPA, and maybe just leave it that way.
Well, I mean, I mean...
I'd like to give the town a chance to have a vote on it, say, but we're going to do it. It's probably going to be mandated within a couple of years anyways, so it's not like we really get a lot of choice in it.
Well, the thing, the thing of it is, if you, if you take a look at what ARPA is supposed to be trying to accomplish, I think it's a good place for it to be.
Absolutely. And as I said, with Parkland Lane parking lot, that's a proven for the town, that's going to take us, you know, hopefully, 30 years down the road.
30 years. Even you won't be selecting them.
No, I hope not.
Well, I would certainly accept the motion to, to that effect.
You have the exact dollar amount for me, Jim, so I can read that?
That's the breakdown of the quote itself.
I just need the total, $37,300, the top number is exact?
No, so...
$380.
Yes, I'm sorry. The top number is what we need to pay out. We're going to be getting back the $30,000.
I make a motion that we approve from ARPA funds $37,380.80 to implement the body cameras.
I would second that motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Todd? Thank you, Chief, for that.
Speaking of body cameras, I don't know if, I did, I am implementing a body worn camera policy, which we have not had before, obviously, so I did provide it to you guys to review. I don't know if you have a chance to review it, or have any questions you want me?
Well, I'm sure we will, once we've spent some time with it.
Is it in the packet here?
I don't think so.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, it is.
The next thing on the list?
Yeah.
We'll review it, or next time.
No worries. I did reach out and receive feedback from both the school district, Stats and Insight Meditation Center, just because I thought those would be sensitive areas that may want to put in on.
Right, yeah.
They won't reach out to me without any issues.
Great.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect to have issues. Pretty, we're pretty good as far as community goes, I think, but we're on the same page here. Speaking of community, I did see you taped off the rock down there.
Yes.
I did ask him to just do something, block it off, so nobody would get into it.
The climbing wall.
Not yet.
The climbing wall.
Not yet, so.
Down a rice park.
It is, it needs to either be dismantled.
Dismantled.
It's bad. It's really bad right now.
They have been like that for three years.
No, it's, it's really bad right now.
It's bad. I know it is bad.
It's a hazard at this point.
Is it a historic, or is it...
No, 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 it's, Rockworks gave it to the town.
Yeah, Rockworks would either have to come in and do a total rehab, or just get rid of it.
Your kids get on top.
So I don't know. How do you know the reputation?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's bad. That's why I brought it up, it's real bad now.
While you're here, Chief, how about talking about radio replacement?
Sure.
I know we got to do it, it's $145,000.
The, on our end, our portable radios are at least 10 years old. We received, or we purchased those when we went to Regional Dispatch, 2012. There is, as far as I know, there's no grant available through the Regional Dispatch Center to replace them. I know I've been talking with Rob about it. I know Rob's put in for multiple grants, because they've just gotten nowhere.
Okay.
We're at the point where the current portables that we have are not supported anymore. We can't get parts for them, we can't, we can't get them fixed. I don't want to speak on Rob's behalf, but I'm pretty sure he's in the same boat.
What are they, assholes?
Worse than that. So as my portion of it, or the police's portion of it, we're asking for 15 portables. The mobile radios, the radios that are in my cruiser, I plan on just building into my cruiser budget, so I'll replace one, at least for the next cycle.
Didn't Bob already come in for that? He was getting some grant money towards it or something, because I remember him talking about the numbers, and the one he liked was actually a little less than some of the other ones.
So he did apply for a grant this year. It's my understanding that the government, the federal government, has paused any more release, release of that grant. But as the chief has alluded to, Chief Rogowski has applied for this same grant many years in a row. This year, he tried a different tactic by doing a regional grant with OKM. It's still unlikely that we will get it, and I also know that Mike Moriarty at Dispatch has continuously applied for grants to replace all of the radios in the dispatch as well, and has not been successful either. So that's why we kind of find ourselves in the situation where instead of maybe replacing two or three radios a year, which would be the best course of action in the future, you know, we have to replace the whole cadre of them at once.
Well, they don't work, so that's kind of a problem.
Yeah, and they also don't communicate with the other community.
Yeah, they don't communicate, and we can't talk to Hardwick or Peter Sam.
Well, they don't work.
Or say to police.
Well, the problem with doing two or three years, it's something that they're just, it's the same radio, they're just no good again.
Yeah.
It's, it's maybe something that, when it comes to budgeting, you have to look into, start putting a little, you know, a bit aside every year, and maybe we could open up one of those recurring accounts for you for that, to start a radios account where you put some money into. So when it does come around in the future, it doesn't hit again all at once.
Well, that's, that's why I'm going to try to, at least on the mobile side, build it into my cruiser line.
Yeah, that would be good.
Right.
But it's just something to think about, it's another one of those, you know, it's a revolving account, we can keep money in there and add to it, and try to...
I mean, we're exceedingly fortunate that ARPA money is here, and available to us for this purchase as well. Something that definitely is needed, and the fact that we can just say to you tonight, without going, oh, my gosh, what do we do, is, to me, a wonderful use of ARPA funds. So I would accept a motion if you're in agreement.
What's the amount for these?
Not to exceed 40, $145,000.
I make a motion, we release ARPA funds not to exceed $145,000 for the police department to replace portable radios.
I would second that motion.
Please, fire.
I'm sorry? Please, fire.
Please, fire.
Okay, I would accept that as a friendly amendment, I'm sure, so...
Yes.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, Chief, for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
See how easy your life is with ARPA?
No.
Well, this would be a challenge for us.
Well, it's not like when people talk about ARPA, we should give, you know...
A rundown.
Pay bonus for people that did this and that, and it's like, no, we just, the need's coming out. Instead of having to hit the taxpayers and look at overrides or something, we're still going to be able to stay within our budget, which is, which is good.
And this allows us to make, you know, go forward with a purchase that we're still going to have to wait three or four months for, instead of having to wait for a town meeting.
If it's only three or four months.
Then wait three or four months after the town meeting, so...
Yeah, and that's another, another point about the body cameras. I mean, I'll sign the quote tomorrow, they're still two months out. By the time we get trained up, the policy's accepted, everything, it'll be March or April before we actually build.
It's going to start somewhere, you know?
Absolutely.
Nothing you can implement quickly, that's for sure.
Thank you so much.
All right, good job.
Nice to see you around town as well.
Well, thank you.
I see you out there walking in the cold, and in the kind of warm.
I try to, as much as I can. Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Okay, we're, we move forward now with a couple requests. I see that the paperwork has been done. Request to use town property for the 250th Committee, Community Ice Skating Rink again this year. They have produced the paperwork, it's necessary, and Sandy, we have all the signatures that are necessary?
Is that just a request to use town property?
Yeah, this isn't a special event.
No, it's not a special event, so...
Okay.
Right, it doesn't, they didn't really, they set up on the common list, that the hours they opened, they did concessions, and the kids, but all off the road, they're not interfering with anything. I make a motion, we approve the use of the, excuse me, South Common for the 250th Anniversary Committee, from December 15th through March 15th, for the purpose of setting up an ice skating rink.
I would second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. One-day liquor license, Pi Town is requesting, I think they must be catering a...
They changed their name.
No, this is a whole different group.
Not officially yet.
Okay, because the sign is different.
Yes, and I believe they're still...
They're still doing business as Pi Town.
Yes, they're still doing business. Their DBA is still Pi Town. The sign is different, but they're working towards the, all of the official changes.
So this is, okay, so, at any rate, they're requesting a one-day liquor permit. I know that the chief has signed off on that. It must be for, it seems like a Christmas party of some sort somewhere, the Fidelity Bank?
I don't know.
It seems like a Taste of...
Yeah, a Taste of Ferry, or the surrounding towns.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
I make a motion, we approve the one-day liquor license for Pi Town for December 14th.
I would second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the appointment to the Barry Cultural Council, Nina Belanger.
And we've confirmed we have an open seat, and this is...
It just, it was there. They have no idea.
I don't know, you know, I don't know.
They've already approved her being on the committee.
Do we know who the other, who, who the other individuals are on that? I think Liz Martin is on this, I think.
Oh, Liz is on it. Oh, you mean, who's on it now? Liz, we have...
This is a cultural con, yeah, and what this is, is they receive grants from the state to put on various kinds of cultural events.
Cultural acts, they call them now.
Well, I make a motion that we appoint Nina Belanger to the Barry Cultural Council, and if for some reason there's not open seats, then the vote will be nullified.
Yeah, it's my understanding that they've been looking for...
I'm making the motion to approve her, and if for some reason there is not an open seat, the vote will be nullified. So we wouldn't have to retract it, just in case.
I would, I would second that, I would second that motion.
It's my understanding that they, they have needed an additional person, it's just nobody's come forward with any interest.
Just making sure in the motion, that's all. It doesn't hurt it this way.
Yep.
Okay.
So seats open, she's upset.
We have, and the annual...
Get a vote on it, though.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The annual license renewals, the annual liquor, or alcohol license renewals, we have a list of Pi Town, Yummy Garden, Inc., Marketplace on the Common, Wholesome Farmers Market, Barry Post Two Building Association, Red Tomato Pizza.
This is not an inclusive list. There's still outstanding renewals, but we're presenting them as they come in.
And these are incomplete, cowering on their payments and their...
Oh, yes.
They are, we do have the building inspector, who has a couple of outstanding issues that he's working on with a couple of different facilities in town. Some of them haven't returned their paperwork yet, but, so he's working with them through that, and as long as they are in compliance by December 31st, we will be able to issue their new license, and if they are not, then we will not issue the license.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor licenses for these six businesses that are listed here this evening, with the caveat that if they do not comply with the building inspector's wishes, the license will be upheld until, pardon, withheld, until such time as they comply.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertainment and amusement.
It's at the bottom of the second page.
Okay, Dunkin' Donuts, entertainment and amusement, interesting. Dunkin' Donuts and Pi Town.
Because they have a TV.
TV.
Because they have a TV.
Oh.
Entertainment, definition.
Okay.
Or it's an amusement.
There's probably more that do, and they just don't know this a thing.
Well, I would say that Barry Patch does, as well.
We, we, yes.
Yeah, we'll be working towards that as well.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve Dunkin' Donuts and Pi Town's entertainment and amusement license.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving down to the Common Victular's license, those are Jenkins House Bed and Breakfast, Insight Meditations Society's Forest Refuge, Insight Meditation Society Retreat Center.
Make a motion to approve those three licenses.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
It's like a vote. Motor vehicle...
So that was the in holder, Common Victular. And we also have a whole list of Common Victular, I don't know.
We do have a whole list of Common Victular licenses, and those would be Barry Post Two, Building Association, Apple Green, New England, Dunkin' Donuts, Red Tomato Pizza, Barry Patch, Wholesome Farmers Market, Yummy Garden, Marketplace on the Common, and Pi Town.
Make a motion that we approve those Common Victular licenses as well.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motor vehicle license renewals, so we have two. Higgins Energy Alternatives, Inc., White Valley Motors, Inc., and Motor Specialties Company.
Does it matter if we do them separate in class one and two, are they all right?
That's okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve those three licenses. Higgins Energy being class one and White Valley Motor Specialties Company being class two.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The difference between the two classes is that the Higgins sells brand new vehicles and class two is only used, so that's the difference.
All right. I didn't know if you had to separate them for any official reason, I would assume not.
No.
Okay, we have one item in old business, the host community agreement between the town of Barry and the Patient Caregiver Connection LLC.
I don't have access to that letter myself.
I have it. Hold on.
Brief people on it, though, the CPC has decided to cut back, scale back their productions here in town, so the amount they were recommending for a contribution would exceed 3% of the predicted anticipated sales. So they're recommending a new lower number that go into the host agreement.
They haven't recommended the number, though, have they?
I believe he did.
I don't think so.
I thought he did it in the email. Once again, we can call him and ask if you'd like.
No, he says, since we are not 100% sure what the actual annual revenue will be, it would be tricky to assume the payment amount that would appropriately recover, impact costs by the town while remaining in compliance with the amended law.
I think we pass over this item until such time as we have more information from the, from the Patient Caregiver Connection.
Well, yeah, we haven't ratified the initial offer with them, obviously.
Right, because it was dependent on...
So we're operating, we're operating on the old host agreement, we just won't have any payments after November 11th on that old agreement because it's non-compliant.
Right.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any, any issue with waiting, we'll still have the host agreement in effect.
I would suspect he would have some recommendation as he deliberates further with his board as to what the...
Yeah, I don't know why he cut back, I mean, you can produce what you can produce and endorse, you think you'd take advantage of the space and make what you can.
It sounded to me from his email that it was a board decision and not his personal decision, and so perhaps there's some, you know, change in the way in which they're going to operate their, I think they're going to grow and do more in Framingham than here. At least that's what it said in the email.
Yes.
We could call him and ask if we're curious, but it's strange to me, if you have a facility that has enough space to grow, you would think you'd utilize that space to the best performance.
Maybe it's more cost effective to move it to Framingham. It's all, it has to be about the bottom line.
Well, yes and no, but I think the host agreement also has a stipulation that if they just continue using the plan, it has to be moved and disassembled and just decommissioned. I thought there was, you can't just abandon it and not use it. So that's, that's what I'm saying, if you have to run and use it, it's strange, I don't understand why. I'll ask him out of curiosity and see, but...
Well, I'm sure we're going to have a conversation about this again is when we get more information from him. You know, I was just kind of surprised that, you know, we were doing one thing and 48 hours later we're doing another thing.
He's more than willing to have a conversation, you said, tonight and if you want.
I mean, I just don't think it's worth a conversation until such time as he has a number and stuff so that we can get a legal opinion on it and make sure that the town's, you know, the town is safeguarded. I mean, I have to respect his decision.
Oh, we have no choice.
Yeah.
You know, you can't pay more than the 3%, and that's...
Exactly.
...he believes he would be. All right, so why don't we just table that item then for now and move on?
Do you want to make a motion to table? Or just indicate we'll continue to discuss this on our old business?
I'll just put table, no actual dates.
Okay.
I don't think we need to.
Okay.
We can officially do a motion to table, we can just say, pass on it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, we're going to go into executive session for the purposes of, at least that we're going to accept a motion to do that, executive session, you want to get us in executive session?
Sure. Make a motion, move into executive session, chapter 38, section 21A, to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real estate.
Yes, the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on our negotiation position.
Okay. And we will come out slowly for the purpose of adjournment.
That's correct. Thank you. You have a motion, I've seconded, those in favor?
Paul Sullivan, yes.
Marshall, yes.